Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kevin Rigstedt, the Chairman of Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. And welcome to the meeting, the July meeting. I'm going to go through some introductions and instructions before we proceed with tonight's applications and agenda. The Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and one alternate. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Derek Horn for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Horn at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, introductions of the board, starting with...
Derek Horn, staff.
Leonard Stewart, alternate.
Gail LeBrett.
So as you see, I went through the instructions and talked about we have five elected members tonight. We only have two elected members present and one alternate. And for tonight's activities, if Lynn, if you could be a voting member. So we have three members. And for any applicant to be approved, as it said, you need to have three approvals. Or, and if you don't want to have us here tonight because you feel at risk of getting three, you can talk to Derek and get on the agenda for a subsequent meeting, I believe. So with that, we're going to take care of a couple of things. We'll talk about the minutes from last June 1st meeting. Anybody have any comments, changes, or motions?
I do not.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the 1st of June as proposed.
I second.
Any comments? And all those in favor say aye. Aye. We have four items for the public hearing tonight, although I'm going to skip right to the fourth one, which concerns the Brookfield Investment Group. We will not, we have received a letter from the applicant. We will not be hearing that application tonight because we have three. However, one member of the board will have to step down because they're an abutter. So Derek, do we need to make any vote, or just state that...
I would just take a vote, motion to continue it to the August 3rd meeting.
Okay. Let's do that. I make a mo...
Okay, I'll move that we continue this to the next meeting on August 3rd.
All right, and I second that. Comments? All those in favor of moving it to the August 3rd meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain?
Abstaining.
Okay. Well, then it's going to automatically move then, right?
Right.
Okay, so if you're here for that application, sorry, but I got you out of the way right away, right?
Appreciate that.
See you next month.
I did, yes. You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we still have three items left on the agenda this evening, and we're going to go in order. The first one is Richard and Jennifer Marshand applicants are seeking a variance to construct a 16-foot-by-20-foot garage that will not meet the required side yard setback. A variance is required because the proposed garage will be set back approximately two feet from the side property line, whereas Section 5.1 of the zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot side yard setback. A variance is also required because the applicant's proposed moving an existing shed to a location that will be approximately three feet from the side property line, whereas a 10-foot side yard setback is required. The property is located at 148 Elm Street, which is map 36, Lot 93, in a residential one district. Before we hear the applicant on that, we need to determine whether this application has regional impact.
I'll make a motion to find that it has no regional impact.
One second.
All right, any discussion? We have a motion that it's no regional impact. All those in favor say aye. Aye. 3-0-0. Okay, Richard or Jennifer Marshand?
Richard.
Yes, please come forward. Have a seat, because the camera and the sound picks you up much better, sitting in that seat.
Thank you.
And you understand we have three members on the board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Please proceed.
Well, I moved here from a larger house with a five-car garage. I came here and it's a smaller house, and I need some storage. I have no garage right now, and that's the only size I can really build to get in there. And that's about all I can say.
So you're looking for...
16 by 20.
Paperwork here.
I need some storage space.
So describe your property a little bit. You know, is it narrow? It's hard to find a good location to put...
It is narrow. It's very narrow. I live right on the lake. And one, the side that's going to be two feet away is the driveway side, shared driveway. And the other side is, Carl is right behind me. And it's very narrow. It's a lot. It just goes right down to the street that way from the house.
So you have a shed, but it's not very large. You're moving it...
It's 5 by 13, right.
And then you're putting a larger, you said a garage or is it a shed?
Yeah. It's a one-car garage with a workshop is how it would be built, to put my tools on one side and storage.
Do you, it looks like your neighbors may have similar type of garages, do they?
They do.
Similar properties?
Yes.
Narrow, long?
Yes, sir.
Anything else to add?
I don't.
Anyone have any questions? Lynn, go.
I'm just orienting myself from here, right, lake, road.
Yeah, it's on the road part, right at the bend, right.
Okay, this is the lake on this side.
That's the lake, yes.
So if I can question, just what you're proposing, the shed exists on this...
Right where I want to build the garage, right.
You're just talking about shifting it a bit closer to the house and building the garage here.
Yes, closer to the garage next door.
Okay, and then building your new...
Right.
Building your proposing on that site.
Right, and those are the telephone wires you see right near it. That's why it has to be closer to that line, property line.
Oh, it says OHW for overhead wire.
Yes, overhead wires, that's...
Oh, I didn't see that.
And I had, I had the electric people come out, I had the guy come out, and he said, he showed me right where I could build it and not be in the way of the wires.
Okay, so there are constraints on that, which are...
Yeah, I couldn't put it any more forward towards the house. It had to be back that far because of the telephone pole and the wires.
Any additional questions? Yeah? Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
And is there anyone here that's going to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay, and you can, sir, you can take your seat.
Thank you.
Please come forward, state your name. Have a seat first.
Thank you. Very briefly, my name is H.C. Neely. I live at 146 Elm Street. I'm a butter to the Marshands on the town side of the property.
Okay.
I've owned property there since, well, for almost 30 years. I'm familiar with what they're doing, and I'm just here to voice my total support for what they're doing.
Okay, so you believe it's consistent with the neighborhood?
Absolutely.
By putting this garage in there, and doesn't stand up? It's not too unique type of thing?
Not unique at all. It's what we have all done, almost all of us, at one time or another.
Okay.
I've been before this for myself, and I've done things, you know, five years ago with Derek and the board.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone speaking against the application? Any interested parties? Any last minute questions? All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I believe we can deliberate on that right now. Any comments? Motions?
I would move we grant the application as requested.
I'll second.
Okay, and I would give my support in the fact that this property is unique. It's consistent with the neighborhood, and that the hardship, the special condition is that this long, narrow property with overhead wires, et cetera. So with that, a first and a second for granting approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. 3-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, we'll move on to the second application. John Martel applicant is seeking a variance to rebuild a single-family residence that does not conform to the required front yard setback. The existing single-family residence is located 18 feet from the property, excuse me, from the front property line, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot front yard setback. The property is located at 149 Bog Road, which is map 4, Lot 71, in a residential one district, and prior to our public hearing, we'll need to vote on regional impact.
I'll move that it has no regional impact.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, so John Martel, please come forward, have a seat. Tell us about your application.
Okay, I reside at 163 Bog. I'm the butter. I've lived there for 31 years. I've been staring at this house for 31 years. It's a shambles.
What is your name, sir?
John Martel.
Okay, all right. You're an abutter to this property?
Yes, I live at 163 Bog.
Oh, it's interesting. So you're also the owner?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Okay.
I just bought in January, and what I'd like to do, so right now, it has broken windows, there's no faucets, there's no working septic system, no ceilings, no landscaping. I think you've got pictures.
We do.
There's the vinyl siding is damaged. What I'd like to do is to restore it and do some landscaping. I will be installing a new septic system, which I'm talking to Derek, will meet all the guidelines. I will upgrade the well, new plumbing, new electrical. It's maintaining the same sized house. It's got to be restored on the same foundation. I will not be going laterally. I will not be going up with it. Just be almost a similar house, except it'll be almost brand-new. As I said, it's been a nice war for quite a few years.
Okay.
Derek and I have worked very closely on this thing. Actually, I bugged him quite a bit. He was very helpful.
I'll tell you what, I ran in the Goffstown Gallup a couple of weekends ago, which runs right past his property, and I actually noticed this house. I'm like, oh, interesting, this house doesn't look like anybody's living there.
It's been, they moved out of there in, I think it was December.
Okay.
And I don't know how they live there. There was, there's no faucets. They didn't use the water, apparently. The ceilings are gone, as apparently in the wintertime, they had a lot of water backup from the roof, so I will need a new roof. It's going to need almost everything brand-new.
Can you describe why you can't move the house further back to comply with the front yard setback?
The brook is, if I move it back, the brook is 10 feet behind the house, Bog Brook. You might be able to see it there, I don't know.
I do, it's on the backside of that property, yes.
Backside of the house. So the septic system is going to be, it's right there. The septic system is within five feet from the brook, which now is illegal. So the property going towards my house extends 200 feet from the brook, and apparently the requirement is 75 feet. So I talked to Brown, and Brown will be installing their new septic system in there. I mean, I've been staring at this thing for 30 years.
Does that, does that still apply, that you can't go further back if you were to go further, I don't know?
I think, Derek...
On this, this picture? Is this the picture that you may be referencing?
Yes.
So there's no, there's no ability to go further downwards on the map?
I think I'm missing some frontage. Two feet.
If, I think what Mr. Martel's saying is if he moves it south...
Okay.
Along the road, then the septic can't be on that side of the property. You have to put it to the rear of the house, which then puts it closer to the brook.
Okay.
Where the house is positioned there, the septic can go off to the side and maintain that 75-foot setback from the brook.
So there really is no other buildable configuration reasonably?
With involving a septic, there may not be. And I believe it was also Mr. Martel's intention to use the existing foundation.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to stay on, actually, I have to raise the foundation by four inches. We had some tests done, and apparently the foundation, based on, what is it, the floodplain?
Yes.
Is short of four inches, so I'm going to have somebody go in there, raise the house, put in six-inch blocks all up on the, on the foundation, which will conform to what he, this gentleman, required, and then I will restore the house.
So you intend to be conforming in all other aspects, except we will not be able to meet this one thing?
Yep.
And you're talking about, you said raising, so jacking up, not, not a full demolition, but just an elevation?
No, just raising it and putting in the, the blocks and setting it back down.
All right. Does anybody have any additional questions?
Just, I guess, why, I'm presuming your ultimate intention is to use this for a rental property?
I might rent it, I might sell it. Don't know what I'm going to do yet.
But obviously, you're investing in the property and improving the town.
I was approved today for a loan for it. So the timing.
Yeah. I have no further questions. Anybody? All right, thank you, Mr. Martel. Is there anyone else here to speak on behalf of the application? Any interested parties? Anybody speaking against the application? All right, you may return to your seat, sir.
Thank you.
And if there are no further questions from the board, we will close the public hearing, and I believe we can deliberate now. Any comments? Motions?
I'll move that we grant the application as requested with the comment that it definitely looks like a positive move and an upgrading of the property, so I think it's something to be encouraged.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Okay, I concur, and no comment additional. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Martel. 3-0-0.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the gentleman.
All right, Derek, doing his job, doing a great job, as always.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the third application for the evening, and you'll have to help me out on the spell, the pronunciation. Jim and Karen Huzak?
Hizak.
Hizak.
I'll get that from there.
Hi. Jim and Karen Hizak applicants are seeking a variance to allow a porch and above-ground pool within the wetland and service water conservation. We're here to be known as the WSWC District. The porch and above-ground pool are located approximately 48 feet from the limit of wetland within the water service WSWC District. A variance is required because the land located within 50 feet from the limit of wetland is within the WSWC District, and Section 13.3.5.2 of the zoning ordinance does not permit the construction of a structure within the WSWC District. The property is located at 64 Van Buren Circle, which is map 3, Lot 59-39, in an agricultural district. Prior to any public hearing, we'll need to vote on regional impact.
I'll move that we find no regional impact.
I'll second.
Okay, I have no discussion, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. 3-0-0, no regional impact. Okay, and you are?
I am Jim Hizak.
Okay.
Reside at 64 Van Buren Circle.
Please tell us about your application.
We have come across that we have, already have structures on our property where we changed a deck and we put in a pool, put in a pool unknowingly. We needed a permit, and come across that we had a deck that I enclosed last year, and coming through the town now, we found out that we have a setback limit in our backyard because of the wetland area on our property, and we have encroached on that by two feet with each structure. And we need a variance to continue with the town, hopefully, and get the proper variance and permits required for these structures to exist at our property still.
Okay. Now I see this application was not sent to the planning board because it's not required. The application does require comment from the Conservation Commission. Have they had a chance to look at it?
Have not had a chance to look at it.
Let's see. Ordered the fire department and a butter notification. So, any, anything else to add before we talk about this a little bit?
I just think we live in a very nice neighborhood. We, there are several houses, very similar, that have pools, and we've added basically same structures that added much more value to our home, according to the town. We've been reassessed and all that, so, and I think everything follows the proper guidelines, and we've done things a little backwards, and we apologize, but we've, we'll learn from our mistakes and hopefully continue on the right path. Good citizens of Goffstown, we've been here for 11 years, and we continue to reside here for a long time, so we hope we can fix this.
How long have you owned the property?
11 years.
Oh, it has been 11 years.
We put a lot of financial, a lot into our house financially through these two projects, and it would burden us to have to either change them or remove them. And we have young kids who enjoy them, and we would, like I said, like to do things properly. We're here to fix those.
Now, what occurred that you found out that you were in violation of this 50-foot rule?
The town contacted us.
Oh, they just through just random surveillance, or you were getting a permit for something?
Yeah, I have no idea what the access was. I wasn't, wasn't told. I just received a call from the building inspector.
Building inspector?
Yeah. To please call him. It was when our pool was being installed, so the pool was being filled up with water and...
Okay.
Somebody...
Noticed it or something?
I, we weren't, we've had pools in the past, and we've never had a permit for a pool. And we reside here for, except 11 years, and we put in a larger pool this year, and again, we were unaware of the wetland setback, and fortunately, we've put our pool in a location where it's, again, 48 feet from the wetlands, and two-foot encroachment in our porch is in the same position, so I think we've, we lucked out, hopefully be able to get a variance where we can work with those numbers. Again, we're looking for your...
Had the pool been even closer prior, recently?
Oh, yeah.
How it had been?
Much closer. We've had, it wasn't as large, it was, they were round pools, and again, nothing's ever said we've had, we've shared with neighbors, splitting tanks of water, and no one's ever said not to do it, and we've just, we've done it with it. We have young kids, and no one's, nothing's ever been said.
Do you know, are you able to easily discern whether your neighbor's pools are within that 50 feet, or are they clearly outside of 50 feet?
I think our property is unique, that we are, we're one of the major abutters of the wetland. We have our house and the next house over are the two, one to a wetlands area. Most other neighbors have pools where they don't have those limits on them. They can pretty much put a pool in where they want, to my knowledge. So I would think we're unique in that situation.
I looked at the GIS on this, and it appears that the wetland, you're pretty much at the, there's a boundary of the wetland, and it doesn't extend a lot further. I'm guessing it's a north-south orientation there. You appear, from what I saw from the information card, to be sort of on the outside boundary of the wetland, and it doesn't extend a lot beyond this property.
Yeah, correct. Okay. Yeah, I was discerning that too online.
Can I ask, can you orient me a little bit here? When I'm looking at the front of your home here on the property, all right, how does that, this, the, the, I mean, so this is the front of your home?
That's our front, yes.
And it's set off the back of the property like that. Okay, so that would be roughly somewhere off the, again, looking at the front here?
Not, not off to the right, no. It's, I mean...
More like straight behind?
Yeah, pretty much, almost, the porch is directly behind the main house, not the attached family room, and the pool is even off to the right a little bit more, but as a wetland setbacks, it does have a sharp angle off our garage.
So the pool's not, not attached to the porch, it's attached to the house or anything? It's out on its, it's on its own?
Correct. It's freestanding. We put in permits to the town to build decks with hopes of this going through that are within the setback limit that we plan on doing hopefully very soon. So you think it's a...
So this pool is a permanent structure? Is it in-ground pool?
No, it's an above-ground pool, it's not a permanent structure.
And it's not able to be moved?
Not without major financial strain on us. We, it would cost thousands of dollars to install, and it would be a financial burden, I think.
So, but it's not in-ground, it's above-ground?
It's above-ground.
It's surrounded, or is it, it's like a permanent structure, I guess?
It will be. It's not, we have no plans of moving. I brought pictures.
Sure.
I don't know if you guys would like to view them at all. There's three pictures in the rear of our house. I didn't go all the way to the left to follow the pool, I just pretty much showed where the pool sits.
Yeah, but it's a, this is not the kind of pool that you could install yourself.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
It's not an inflatable pool?
No.
Not the, not the kind that they dump the elephant in in the commercials, I don't believe.
No.
50 feet, 48 feet? Is there a reference marker or something they measure from?
It was all based off of scaling it off. We helped him scale it off on the plan, but until you got a wetland scientist out there back when this subdivision was done, they did not mark the edge of the wetland or the edge of the district, as they're now doing with newer subdivisions.
Okay. Are we able to keep one of these photos for the record? Yes. Okay. I think we can keep at least this one, if possible. All right, any questions for the applicant? Okay, I don't think I have any, well, I do, so if you're able to quantify the impact, you say thousands of dollars, do you have any reasonable estimate that, you know, is it $5,000? Is it $10,000? Is it $1,000? What is it to move the pool?
To move the pool?
To be in compliance?
Well, it costs us $2,500 to install it, so to take it down, regrade an area to fit the pool, and I don't think we, we're kind of limited. We would like to make it a nice area for our family, and we would like to put decks in the backyard, and if we change the angle of the pool to lengthwise, we're limited because of our setback limits. We really can't build a deck we would like, so to keep the pool the length it is, I mean, we like to keep it the same area that it is now, facing our house where it's perpendicular. It's not, it's hor, it's...
I see, yep.
Is, we would like to keep it that way in order to build the deck into it, so we would, hopefully, I would think it would be a better part, I mean, of it, I don't know what they charged to take it down. I'm sure it's not as much as installing it, but it would be probably a better part of, I mean, $5,000, I would think.
Okay.
Whereas the pool was very expensive, I think the pool was $6,500, we paid... Whereas the pool was very expensive, the pool was sixty-five hundred, we paid twenty-five hundred to install it.
Okay.
Would hate to have to bear another.
Large. Five hundred, five thousand, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that gives me at least an understanding, you know, when you say multiple thousands, what that is. Okay, any other questions?
Derek, when do you think we would hear back from Conservation Commission, or has their time passed?
They're, they have a meeting on July twenty-eighth. Uh, this came in after, a, a couple of days before the last one, and they had a, their agenda had already been set and posted, so it couldn't go to the past one, but it could go to the July meeting, um, and be ready for an August zoning board meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any, uh, comment on how we want to proceed? I think I'm gonna continue the public hearing if there's anybody else that's speaking on behalf of the applicant. Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Peter Jenkins. And everybody tonight started off by saying how long they've been in Goffstown, and I've only been here since nineteen forty-seven, so. Apologize for that.
It was formed, it was a town, then.
I feel bad for Fred and Jim, because, like I, they bought into a cluster development at, uh, and in the cluster development, they put these houses in, and you're not, you don't have a chance to say, let's slide it this way, 'cause someday I'd like to do this. You buy the house knowing what you got, but you buy the house. I bought a house down there in two thousand. When we went to add on to it, we couldn't add on to the back because of wetland behind my house. So I had, we had to change our plans and do it to the side. And Jim is, and Karen are carrying the same predicament. Jim's, uh, mistake only involves four percent of the setback rule. He almost slid by with it, but I, I, I'd hate to see him have to move that pool or tear down this room, because it, uh, it would be a great financial burden, I, I am sure. The wetlands that we're approaching on, or he is approaching on to a certain degree, is behind in the center. Van Buren Circle has a circle, and the middle of the circle is wetlands, and water runs through that, and it crosses underneath the road and comes through my property and, and exits, exit out. Now, near Jim's house, it's not real, there's no running water. I mean, the turtles are down by me, and the ducks stay down by me, and it isn't like it was a prime wetland, and there's birds landing there, and turtles going to shore, and, and nesting, and stuff like that. So, I don't think the wetlands is, like, my wetlands is running water, and, uh, you know, so it's, it's more of a, more of a problem. I just want to close in saying that Jim's a good neighbor. He's a hell of a father, he has two boys there, and they're either playing baseball or hockey and the thing. And I'm sure he's gonna teach them to swim, and it wouldn't surprise me that he lets it freezes over, and they do hockey on the, on the swimming pool this winter, 'cause that's the kind of father he is. So I hope you act favorably for, for this, uh, this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I should update my thought, it's, it's the porch and the pool that are both within the, the area. Can I see that picture again, uh, from, it shows the, does it show the porch in the picture?
One of the pictures, didn't it?
Yeah, it shows the corner of it.
It's enclosed or gonna be enclosed?
It is enclosed, it sits up on the piers.
All right, that'd be much more significant than the pool. Thank you. Okay, any, uh, anyone else? I think that's it.
I, I have another question I want to ask Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, when this pool was installed, um, are you downstream or down the wetlands from Jim's property?
I'm south of Jim by quite a bit.
Did the, did the pool seem to impact the amount of, or change the amount of water flow that you get?
In no way. And what I was trying to say is, the wetlands that he approached on by two feet is really the core of the wetlands for the whole wetland in, further to the southwest is where the water flows, and that's where the ducks and the, and the turtles, turtles are. But they were probably six hundred yards from, from Jim's house. Thank you, but I'll be clarified.
Thank you.
Can I just add on that? Where we even, the forty plus or forty-eight minus feet, where we, that spot is a dry area.
Correct.
It's not retaining water over here, I understand that's a, that's a basin.
It's within the buffer.
Within the buffer, but it is a dry area.
Right. It's not in the wetland itself.
It's dry now.
Okay.
Exactly, it's probably a hundred feet from it now. Okay, any comment?
No.
Do we want to re, keep this application open to wait on comment from the Conservation Commission?
Yep. That's what I would say.
I would agree with Gail on that.
So, keep the public hearing open?
Yeah.
To accept their comment?
Yeah, when their comment comes in, somebody might have comments on their comments.
Right, okay. Anyone to make a motion on that, that we maintain the public hearing?
I will, I'll move that we continue the public hearing, um, till our August meeting, which is what date?
August third.
August third, pending comment from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, I concur, on, all those in favor to continue the public hearing until the August meeting, to, uh, wait for Conservation Commission comments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three zero zero, and I think that's it, we don't have to take more votes on that tonight. So you have a question on that, sir?
Yes, sir. Whereas now we submitted two applications to build a deck, um, to build a ready deck. And our pool, um, we're being withheld from doing that at this point, just as far as the access to the pool, which is kind of a safety issue, we're, we're concerned with, with the kids getting in and out of the pool. We had the plans eventually of putting the deck in, and, um, having access to the pool. Right now, we've been told to wait until this clears, so I, I just want to know where that puts us with as far as working on at least getting us an access to the pool.
All right, I can talk to the building inspector tomorrow, and, uh, give you a call, and we can have a conversation about that.
Yeah, Derek will help you out in every way he can, but, you know, we're gonna keep it open till August. And I anticipate we close it, we'll be closing at that point, you know, we'll be finishing this application at that point. I know it puts you another thirty days behind or whatever, but. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and with that, I see no other public hearing items. All right, so we had one other item on our agenda.
Yay.
So we have received, I mean, a volunteer application from Vivian, is it Blondo?
Blondo.
Yep, Blondo.
No, we, do we accept her or recommend that the Board of Selectmen appoint her?
You are an elected board, so you appoint your own alternate members.
Well, I make a motion that we appoint Vivian Blondo as an alternate VBA member.
Do you recommend, do you recommend any of the specified terms? I think that's one of the things we'd want to address as well, correct? The two thousand eight to two thousand eleven, or the two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, or the two thousand ten to two thirteen terms are available. So you can pick one, and we can assign, assign her to one.
I would say, let's get her for three years.
She's stuck.
If she's willing, we'll take the three years.
Yeah, I was trying to say, what, I was appointed for the ten, a ten to thirteen term, was it, when I went, came back as an alternate?
Yeah, and there's more, there's two ten to thirteen terms.
Yep, ten to thirteen, sounds good. I'll second, second Gail's motion.
I don't think I've ever met.
She used to be a selectman, she was a selectman up until this past year.
She was a selectman in the past before that as well.
Yeah, she's, she's been around the town a very long time.
Yeah, I recognize the name, easily recognize the name. I don't think I've ever had the honor to meet. Okay, we have a first and a second to accept the volunteer application and sign, uh, Miss Vivian Blondo to the two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen term, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three zero zero. Congratulations. Hope she's here in August, right?
Yes. I was hoping she'd be here today, we would've put her to work.
Oh, we would've had to swear her in, though, you can't work until you swear in.
Kathy Ball has to come and do her thing.
Do her thing. Okay, well, I see no other items on the agenda, no items in the correspondence folder. Derek, anything else for us to discuss?
No, that's it.
Members?
Motion to adjourn in order?
I guess so.
Sure, why not? I'll, I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, it was a pleasure.
And a very brief pleasure.